I'd like to call the order to the Elkhart City Council meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge? Jamie, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or meditation. Thank you. Melody, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King. Councilman Michler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Present. Make sure the council that we speak directly into the mics, we try to make sure we get heard. Make sure your cell phones are turned off or in self airplane mode. Did I get a motion for minutes for approval for November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five council meeting? Got a motion from Mr. Hinke, second for Mrs. Hines for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Unfinished business, we have none. Patient introductions. I'd like to introduce to you the executive director of the Elkhart Public Library, Tristan Edson.
Good evening. Thank you so much. I'm gonna sign my name real quick. Thank you so much for having me. It's nice to see you again, Arvis. I've ran into you at a few community events, which is what I've been busy doing the last two months. It's two months now as of today that I started here at the Elkhart Public Library. I am originally from Michigan. Hey, pal. You're friendly neighbors to the north. I made my way to Indiana via Illinois, Louisiana, Michigan again, and now I'm here. I'm just very excited to continue the good work that I know that we have partnered on with the city of Elkhart in the past and, you know, just enriching the engagement between us as much as we, you know, possibly can. And I am a resident of the city of Elkhart. And I have to say, as you've just heard, this being my fourth state, this is probably the warmest welcome I have received from any city that I have moved to. All of my neighbors on Thomas Street have been extremely warm and welcoming and very neighborly. Everyone that I have met out at public events, including a few of you, have been great. And I really look forward to continuing to get to know the citizens here and how we can help enrich their lives and bring a love of reading to everyone's home. I thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome to Elkhart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing Jamie with you.
Reports of council committees, we have none.
You're welcome.
Orders on second and third reading, proposed orders twenty-five dash oh dash thirty-nine. Would you read this by title, please?
Proposed ord- proposed ordinance twenty-five dash oh dash thirty-nine. An ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number four-three-seven-zero, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana. As amended to rezone twenty-four thirty-two bypass road, Elkhart, Indiana, four-six-five-one-four, from B dash two, Community Business District, to B dash three, Service Business District.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this ordinance on second reading? Motion by Mr.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fish. Council discussion. So any council discussion? Mr. Hinke.
Do we have the property owner and I see the purpose, but who is the principal owner? That didn't go to record, but.
Good evening. Mike Huber, Development Services Director, City of Elkhart. I missed your question. I thought we were gonna have a representative. They had communicated to Eric that they would be here this evening. I don't see them yet, so.
Repeat your question, David.
All right, so the, so I see there's a principal owner. I've not been introduced to him, but it says for the purpose of a restaurant and and auto sales. Okay.
All right, would you step forward?
I just wanted to get a full idea of your proposal and then the zoning effect.
Please state your name.
My name is Jamie Fink. And we're looking to rezone it so that it can, that we can sell cars out of it again. It was rezoned as medical and then that fell through. So we actually have a tenant in there now who is opening a car lot. And then another tenant that's gonna be opening a fifties diner.
And with that said, I appreciate that the property's been vacant for an extended period of time. It does upgrade from an M one to two as long as that is all permissible. I would be in favor of that if that accompli- accomplishes a restaurant.
So it was M one a long time ago. It was moved to B two. B two doesn't allow for, allows for the restaurant, but doesn't allow for the car sales, which the historical B three, which is what, is what we're trying to get to is the B three to allow for the car sales and the, and the restaurant.
All right, so we're just moving, is the whole property then a B three? Is that the proposal?
That was what was approved by the Plank Commission. That's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
That's basically it?
Thank you. You may, you can sit down. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Anyone in the public for the public hearing? Seeing none, return it back to the council floor. Any more council discussion? Seeing none. Are we, is that in Spanish?
Yes.
See.
See.
Okay.
You gotta look.
Melody, would you do, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Yes.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilman Michler. Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final plea.
Got a motion for Mr. Hinke, second for Mrs. Hines for third and final. Would you read this ordinance by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-five dash oh dash thirty-nine. An ordinance amending the zoning map created pursuant to ordinance number four-three-seven-zero, the zoning ordinance of the city of Elkhart, Indiana. As amended to rezone twenty-four thirty-two bypass road, Elkhart, Indiana, four-six-five-one-four, from B dash two, Community Business District, to B dash three, Service Business District. Councilman Holtz.
Yes.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilman Michler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance twenty-five dash oh dash forty by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-five dash oh dash forty. An ordinance appropriating one million four hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and zero cents for the relocation of American Electric Power Transmission Lines as part of the Hybly Avenue Overpass Project.
I get a motion in a second to adopt.
So move.
Reading by Mr. Curry, second by Mr. Fish for adoption, council discussion. Hold on, David, I think we have some.
Hi, Jeff Schaefer, City Engineer.
Thank you.
So Jeff, the proposed money would come from which fund?
This is coming from, that might be a better question for the controller.
And then is there a shared amount with American Electric?
So I'll back up just a little bit. We have relocated a number of utilities for the project, both AEP, NIPSCO, Fiber Optic Company's Frontier. The utilities that are within our right-of-way are required to relocate at their expense. So all of the utilities to date have been relocated at their expense. This utility is unique because Indiana Michigan Power or AEP owns the property that this utility sits on. So that makes it our expense as the sponsor of the project. As you saw in here, as part of our local tracks grant, Indot is contributing. But in this case, AEP can require us and Indot to pay the entire amount.
They can. My question then would be the age of the lines, the life expectancy of the lines, and are they not gaining new, brand-new equipment and lines at that same time?
And that's a fair question, but I think under state law, our hands are pretty tied here.
It's Christmas.
And David, the fund comes from the Elkhart Capital Outlay?
Yeah.
Where funds come from?
Yeah, I'm not there.
Mr. Michler.
Thank you. So to be clear, we're putting in one point four million and Indot is putting forward another four hundred thousand, correct? For around one point nine million total?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we have a timetable or an estimate of the length of the relocation? And if it will impact anyone's service during it?
This will not impact anybody's service. These are transmission lines, not distribution lines. So they are, basically they're bringing in the new poles and raising those lines. The timeline is actually rather lengthy on this, but it fits with the project timeline that we've developed with Indot, that the contractor can do some work while we're waiting for these material, while AEP's waiting for these materials to come in, then this work will be done and then we can complete the project. So the timeline to do this work has been part of the project schedule that we've been building.
So we don't expect this portion of the project to create any delays with other parts?
Our, it's been built into the timeline.
It's been built into the timeline. Excellent, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Hinke.
The issue I have with it is the account it's coming from. So we've closed how many businesses in the area? And then we're gonna take money that should be reinvested to generate a new tax base. And what we're doing is actually been everything opposite of that. I would hope that we would have other funds from other areas and leave capital investment to investment itself, expecting a return for our citizens and the budget of the city. But I don't see this as a great use of that particular fund and how it was generated. So I will be a no on that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the council? Mr. Michler.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I do believe that creating the overpass will definitely support additional residential and commercial growth in the area. I know one of the reasons why the overpass is so desired is, one, it can help eventually create a no horn zone for trains to go through, which is greatly desired by both residents and commercial businesses in the area. And it will also greatly reduce transit times for both school buses, who oftentimes get stuck at the tracks, increasing desirability of residential development, as well as reduction of emergency services such as police and ambulances, as well as fire that often can get stuck at those tracks or have to reroute. So I do believe this will greatly contribute to both residential, commercial growth in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Curry.
Yes, I'd just like to say this is a great project in the grade fifth district. And you have a great company that's doing this work and I'm sure we getting a bargain price for it.
Thank you. This time I'm gonna open up to the public. Thank you, Jeff. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Please step forward, state your name.
Name is Howard Turner, live in Elkhart. My question is what happens to the project if we don't move the transmission lines? That should have been taken care of before the project started, in my opinion. And on a separate thing, instead of the overpass, why wasn't it an underpass? It seemed like a much easier concept to me. That's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience? Is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council's floor. Thank you, Mayor.
Apologies, still learning the decorum. Megan Irwin, Chief of Staff, I just wanted to speak to the youth of the fund for capital outlay. So we've, we've spoken about this a couple of times in relation to SEA one. The city's been putting aside funding specifically for the match portion, the city's portion of the overpass project, which we estimated to be about twelve and a half million. That is our contribution. The one point four million that's contributing to the project that you're approving tonight is part of that twelve million and is in the capital outlay. So that's been planned. It's not a new expense. It was an expected expense. So just wanted to remind you of that.
Thank you. We turn it back to the council floor, council discussion. Mr. Hinke.
So I can agree, I can understand, I can agree really. If we had data to support the delay of buses, fire trucks and ambulances, but I guess I'm going by the Indiana Avenue Underpass. And when we said that that was gonna bring new opportunity, new revenue and, you know, did it really? What did we do there? And it's still a pretty unfortunate space. So I don't see that that is a good indication of trend of success after the build. I would hope that we would have had and engaged other people to have businesses lined up for the corners, which would be the most valuable properties, before we build it and hope they come. I think we should have planned this out a little bit as, as a part of the economic opportunity that it should be. We're not there.
Thank you. And I'd like to remind everybody that this has been in the planning for at least ten, fifteen years. And some of us on the council doing that planning. So that would have been a time to speak up because this is not new. You know, we get plan how we're gonna budget that twelve million dollars to do this. So this is not a new appropriation. It's something that we knew that we had to do going forward as we continue to deal with the rising cost of construction. Melody, would you do a, I'm sorry, Mr. Curry?
Yeah, Mr. Dawson, you're right. This has been in planning for a long time. And when the Indiana Avenue Underpass was built, there was a bunch of people that thought this should been priority over that. Of course, I was in favor of the Indiana Avenue because I think sometime we have to get up early in the morning to see what's going on. And if you had been sitting at Indiana at five-thirty, six o'clock on your way to work, you would have saw Indiana Avenue leads to the industrial park. And there was a line of people sitting there waiting on one, two, and three, and then four trains. So you had to leave real early. So that, I still think that was the best to put that project first. But this is a great project and it's gonna add a lot of quality of life to this area, too.
Thank you. Melody, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilman Michler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final?
Got a motion from Commissioner, second for Mr. Fish. For third and final, Melody, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-five dash oh dash forty. An ordinance appropriating one million four hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and zero cents for the relocation of the American Electric Power Transmission Lines as part of the Hybly Avenue Overpass Project. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilman Michler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Seven to one.
Thank you. There are no ordinances in the resolution referred to committee. There are no table ordinances in resolutions, ordinances on first reading. Would you read proposed ordinance twenty-five dash oh dash forty-one by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-five dash oh dash forty-one. An ordinance vacating the portion of the twenty-five-foot wide alley, which is adjacent to the east property line of twenty-seven oh nine Whipple Avenue, Elkhart, Indiana, a public way within the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. There are no objections. We'll pass this on the second reading. Would you read proposed resolution twenty-five dash R dash thirty-nine by title, please?
Proposed ordinance twenty-five dash R dash thirty-nine. A resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, authorizing the transfer of seventy-eight thousand and zero dollars from Motor Equipment Category, Street Machinery Account, to Personnel Services Category, Full-Time Account.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this resolution?
So move.
Move by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Curry. Mr. Zeus, before you start, I just said, is this, but what we're dealing with this week and next week, is this gonna be enough?
So I can just go sit down, right? Yes, it should be. We only have two paychecks to worry about, so.
All right, go ahead.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr., Commissioner Zeus? Mr. Hinke.
Seventy-eight thousand dollars for this changeover. Was this amount in your motor vehicle category? What did it represent when it was put to budget?
It wasn't. Originally, our, our paint truck that was approved.
No.
They did not wanna take a trade, a trade-in value for it. After talking with them a few times, they like to refurbish old trucks. And when they found out that ours was very super low mileage, they wanted to jump at it. And we had actually a ninety thousand dollar trade-in value for that, so.
Ninety thousand?
Yes. Believe it, I know it's hard to believe, but.
And so that, that money was?
So that covered. It's, it's still in the, so that's where the transfer's coming from.
Okay.
Thank you.
So my, the money was as a part of a trade-in and you're telling me that those funds automatically went to motor vehicle?
No, they were in motor vehicle.
That that money was already deposited?
Or, excuse me, they were in the motor equipment, in the capital, motor equipment.
Okay. And then this amount, seventy-eight thousand dollars, covers what time period?
From now till the end of the year.
Okay, so it's forward-looking as opposed to, okay. End of story. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Commissioner Zeus? Seeing none, thank you, Commissioner. I'd like to open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Melody, would you do a roll call vote on the resolution, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilman Michler.
Yes.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hinke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed resolution twenty-five dash R dash forty by title, please?
Proposed resolution twenty-five dash R dash forty. Resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Elkhart and the Indiana Fraternal Order of Police Labor Council Incorporated.
Mr. Michler.
A motion to table this resolution.
Got a motion to table, second by Mr. Hinke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This is table. Would you read proposed resolution twenty-five dash R dash forty-one by title, please?
Proposed resolution twenty-five dash R dash forty-one. Resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, approving the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Elkhart, Indiana and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Local Number One Four Eight Four.
Mr. Michler.
A motion to table this resolution.
Second. Motion by Mr. Michler, second by Mr. Hinke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This is table. There are no vacation hearings of the new business. Mr. Hinke.
You know, this one, it's Spanish on this side and they still have my name spelled wrong on that side. And there's.
I like the way they spell it over here, Hinke. I like that.
That, that's, yeah. So maybe someday they'll get that right. But nonetheless, I still, has anyone released the cash reports that I was to get some time ago? Did, did you forward those? Thank you. And then the Tolson Financials?
Tolson Financials are still working on their budget. There'll be a presentation presented by the CEO.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Michler.
Uh, thank you. First, I just want to salute our street department, as well as Buildings and Grounds, for helping us with this tremendous volume of snow we received in the past few days. Without your work, our economy would not move the way it does. So thank you very much. I also want to extend invitation to everyone for upcoming Winter Fest and the Winter Fest Parade, as well as other activities, the tree lighting at Central Green, the market on Central Green, and to check out all of our small businesses downtown as well. and to check out all of our small businesses downtown as well.
The other new business. I also would like not only to thank the street department, police department, the fire department, public utilities, everybody doing this snowstorm, everybody pitched in, and they did a great job. And I just wanna commend the entire staff for, for that. And you'll probably have to do it again tonight, so. We appreciate you. Mayor? Board of Works, Board of Safety, nothing? Department heads, okay. Neighborhood Association reports? There's the Great PMR Neighborhood Association.
Yeah, the Great PMR Neighborhood Association will be meeting this Sunday at 5:00 p.m. at the PMR Park Pavilion.
And everyone is welcome.
That's right.
Okay. Mr. Crabtree.
The Strong Avenue Neighborhood Association will be meeting Tuesday, December 2nd, 7:00 p.m. It's our annual meeting at Mary Daly Elementary in the library. All is welcome.
Thank you. Any other? Seeing none. Privileges of the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything that was not on the council agenda? So please come forward, state your name. Seeing none. Scheduling of committee meetings. There will be an executive session the 15th at 5:00 o'clock to go over contract negotiations. So the 15th, 5:00 o'clock, put that on your calendar, you'll be getting a call out for that as well. Setters of communication?
So move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fish, that we accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion for adjournment.
Motion.
By Mr. Michler, second by Mrs. Hines. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Yeah, that's what they said.